So Marissa, I'm going to leave you in charge of letting people in. It is 6:01 and let's have a roll call vote to begin this meeting. Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Marissa? I can't hear you, Marissa.
Carrie here. Is that better?
Yes. Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Shannon?
Shannon Donham here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
And Cynthia Kuzinski here. Okay, welcome to the January 12, 2021, School Committee Meeting. And my only quick announcement, and then I'll ask Dr. Leclair if she has any, is that we are not going into executive session at the end of this meeting. We will be adjourning from regular session. Dr. Leclair, do you have any announcements?
We have announcements. First, please join Center Pepin staff for a couch conversation on Thursday, January 21st, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Principal Jill Pasquini-Torkio and Assistant Principal Andrea McCollum and their social-emotional learning staff welcome families to informally chat. And another announcement, incoming kindergarten information night will be held on Thursday, January 28th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Spread the word if you know of someone with a kindergarten-age child. The link for that will be on our website. The East Hampton Special Education Parents Advisory Council, in collaboration with the district, is hosting a virtual Basic Rights in Special Education workshop on Tuesday, January 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Kathy Hickey from the Brockton Arc, an affiliate of the Federation of Children with Special Needs, will facilitate the workshop. The link for registration is available on the district website and the East Hampton CPAC Facebook page. Registration is required. And next, as you know, some of you may know, in the fall, all of our students at the East Hampton Elementary Schools were assessed using the STAR screening tool. Over the next few weeks, across all of our elementary schools, students will be screened again using the STAR assessment. This digital screening tool will provide teachers with information to measure growth and plan instruction. Finally, I just want to let everyone know that winter sports were postponed by the East Hampton Public Schools for at least one week due to the community's spread and our red-zone status. We're exploring other options moving forward. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and our next meeting is January 26. It's now time for public speak. So we're going to let three minutes per person. Please say who you are and please hold within that three-minute period, please. And I will start scanning through. Please signal that you would like to speak. And Shelley Thompson. Shelley?
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, my name is Shelley Thompson from Ashley Circle, and I am the mother of three boys, two ninth graders and one fifth grader. All three of my boys play hockey, the older two now for the high school. While it is really discouraging that they are not able to play in actual hockey games for East Hampton, their first year of high school, it would be even more so if they can't even skate with their team. There is really no difference between them being in a gym and on the ice rink. In fact, since hockey players are almost completely covered from head to toe, it's likely more safe. I am aware that there have been numerous studies and articles written to prove that hockey rinks are super-spreaders of COVID, but I had a hard time finding anything written within the last month stating so. All reports, especially from Massachusetts, were from before the two-week shutdown of hockey back in October and November. Since then, rules have become more strict. Before the shutdown, only the two players taking face-offs were required to wear masks, and that was only during the face-off. When hockey was opened back up in the middle of November, they made face masks mandatory for all players on and off the ice. They also have done away with the use of locker rooms at the rinks and are not even allowing players to bring bags into the facility, forcing players to get dressed and undressed outside of the rink. This not only brings down the number of people in the rink at any given time, but it also lessens the time the players spend with each other. In an article I read that was written in November, the Health Director for the City of Needham, Mass. was speaking about how hockey relates to COVID. He was quoted as saying, "There's no way to tell from our perspective whether it's on the ice or waiting for the 10 to 15 minutes while everyone talks after the game." Before the temporary shutdown in the fall, there had been a few cases of COVID spreading amongst hockey teams in the eastern part of the state. In western Mass, this has never been an issue. My boys have been playing on three different teams for the last six months, and there has not been a problem with COVID amongst the teams. I am also certain that most, if not all, of the players that would be participating in the high school practices this winter have been playing for town and/or travel teams since last September, and to my knowledge, also without issue. It is important to point out that there has been players on these teams that have had COVID, but they did not get it from hockey, and it has not spread, did not spread, to any of their teammates, coaches, or players' parents. I feel like this is a good example of how following the rules and guidelines does work. While the skills and drills on ice practices can't come close to the experience of playing games, the kids should be given the opportunity to participate in at least that. They are already missing out on so much. Let's not take yet another opportunity for socialization and self-improvement away from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll scroll through. Please signal if you want to speak. All right. Right now, I'm not seeing anybody.
I want...
Lindsay?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lindsay Rothschild. I live in East Hampton. I'm a parent. I'm also a member of the city council. I want to speak on a couple of things. One is technology leadership in the district. I've noticed and I'm aware of a vacuum of leadership in the past year as our former director was not an educational technology person. And there's a difference between educational focus and just IT. We didn't have a leader that focused on innovation, that attended leadership meetings, that cared about equity, that collected the data for us to know what the main issues in the city were and how to address them. So with his resignation, I saw an opportunity and was excited about the opportunity to fill the seat with someone who could be innovative and add to the technology leadership of the district, which is so needed right now, yet I've yet to see a posting of this position. So I'm wondering when that position is going to be posted to fill that vacuum of leadership with someone who cares about equity, innovation, leadership, and understands that technology serves education and not the other way around. That's one thing. The other thing as a council member, I've gotten increasing amount of emails about students with the lack of internet access, and this is really disheartening, given it's the end of the semester. So as follow-up, I joined some residents in East Hampton to knock on doors and personally find out for myself, so I wasn't working on anecdotal information. And I went to several doors of families that one brought out their internet bill and showed me they can't afford to pay it anymore. They're unable to access the meals because they don't have transportation to the meals. Their student is getting marked absence because they're turning off their video because of lagging issues. We pay for kids to get to school on buses because that's the way they need to get to school to learn, yet now we're discovering there's many kids in our district that are not able to get to school to learn because they don't have the internet access. Cellular hotspots are not adequate. So I'm coming to speak to that issue today, and I am deeply disappointed that we're at this point and we're still hearing this to the point where it's now hitting the city council email inbox. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Omar?
Thank you, Baron Chair. First, I want to say that I was with Councilor Lindsay. First, I want to introduce myself. Omar Gomez, Councilor for District Two. That past Sunday, I took a walk in my district with Councilor Rothschild. And we found, we talked to a few families. After those knock doors that we did that Sunday, I came back home with a lot of concerns. The first one is the internet is still a problem. The hotspot, the school department is giving to those families, they're not working properly. And to me, it's unacceptable. It's going to be almost a year. Those kids are out of school, the building. So they're taking class from their house. I think we have to be more proactive. I think the school committee, superintendent, the mayor, ourselves, we have to be more proactive. We still have people out there with trouble. Trouble with the internet, trouble with getting the meals. There's still family out there that don't have transportation to get the meals. And we have to figure it out and find out how we can bring the meals to them. It's happening in our community, yes. It's still happening in our community, and it's really sad. It's unacceptable. As a leader, as our leaders, we have to take steps, the right steps, to make this better. I know sports is really important. I coach high school, but you know what? It's a lot of kids having problems in our schools. And enough is enough. I think we have to reach those communities, especially the minority community. They have a language barrier, that they cannot access to anyone in the school, and I think that's really important. Please, as a representative of a lot of people in our community, please take action. People are struggling, kids are struggling, and they need help. And they need help now. After a year, it's enough. Thank you.
Myra?
Hello, my name is Myra. I'm a resident of East Hampton and also a parent. And I also wanted to speak to the issues that were just brought up. And also, you know, that I also have communicated with people throughout the community as a parent and as someone that's recognizing a common thread of needs. And I just wanted to be heard about the internet, but also speak about the meals and figure out alternative ways of distribution for those that do not have transportation to the meal sites. I know meals are available right now to everyone regardless of income, but there's an equal disparity in who can actually access and get those meals, not only based on people who don't have transportation, people with mobility issues, and also people that are working throughout the day and cannot leave their homes as they're working to get that meal. And there was a program during the spring, during the closure, in which a bus was used to transport food around the district. And I would encourage whatever funding sources or however that came to be for you to please continue to do so. I think it was effective, and it may alleviate some of the issues with access to people getting meals. There's a reason the school lunch and feeding programs exist. And during the pandemic, it's equally important, if not crucial, that people have access to food for education and being ready to learn.
Thank you. Anybody else? Lucas?
Hi, actually, it's Peter. You're my son's iPad. I'm Peter Marks. I'm a parent here in East Hampton. And my question, it's really more like, I was just thinking about, is transitioning when the kid's going to go back to school? Maybe in a month, maybe in three months from now? But the kids won't have to have school for over a year. They haven't been able in the routine to go to school, to go on a bus, to do all these things. And I would love to hear in the next discussion over the next few weeks, like what transition plan actually is in place from the school district to help children to readjust into a school setting, whenever that might be, like in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see anybody right now scrolling through. If you want to speak, this would be the time to let us know. And I do not see anybody else. Marissa, do you see anybody? I'm not seeing anyone. All right. I am going to close public speak. Thank you, everyone. And we're going on to policy subcommittee updates.
Would this be an appropriate time to acknowledge correspondence received by email?
We could. It's not on the agenda, but we certainly can put it. We would have put it down in other, but we can do it. That's fine.
It's fine to do it in other. It used to always be the announcements and correspondence, but I can certainly wait.
All right.
So this is going to be an active item on the agenda, right, Cindy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would say it would make more sense now, as it's parents basically speaking through the internet and such, to speak as public speak. So I would prefer it to be done now. Because of waiting till the end of the meeting.
That is what I was going to say, is let's move it back up. So let's do that now.
All right. So from Tracy Teague, parent of two students on the EHS swim team, expressing frustration within the requirement for weekly COVID tests and pointing to athletics as necessary for kids' mental health. We received a letter from Haley Nimmens, a Hampshire regional student, requesting to be allowed to participate in the East Hampton swim team for the season. An email from Colton Chapman, requesting a memorial for EHS alum and former athlete Sam Garcia, who died in December of this year. From John Daven, expressing that East Hampton schools are a "miserable failure" for being in remote learning and sharing two articles about schools in Sweden and New York that have been open. From Lauren and John Daven, expressing disappointment in Superintendent Leclair's choice to send an email to the school community about the riots at the Capitol, expressing that their children were not affected by the violence in DC and that school leadership should focus on reopening schools instead of talking about politics. That email also included a FOIA request for the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the EEA, which the superintendent did fulfill since then. And from City Council President Peg Kana, requesting that the Superintendent Leclair and School Committee Chair Cindy Kuzinski attend the next city council meeting to address some of the concerns that we heard from other councilors tonight about internet access and the free lunch program. And that is everything.
Thank you. All right. So let's go back to policy subcommittee. Maren, we have nothing from finance?
No, we have a finance meeting in December. So that was to review both closing out FY 2020, that ended in June 30th, also reviewing Q1 of 2021, and then also beginning the conversation around the upcoming budget process. So just some quick numbers here. In terms of financial closing out of last year, we did spend down all of the budget that we had. We did, however, was able to carry forward some additional funds from the Choice Funds into this fiscal year. Part of the savings was definitely, as we have renegotiated the transportation costs and the use of teacher substitutes. So both of those were down in terms of overall costs. And so then that additional funds was carried forward into our current fiscal year in our reserves. In terms of Q1, we are basically mostly on track as anticipated. We did go ahead and hire a additional building substitute for each of our buildings to be able to help with online learning and to be able to meet the needs when a particular teacher was out, whether for any reason that they're being to be out. Let's see. One of the points, we were talking a little bit about grant funding going into this year, and I'll get to sort of COVID-related grants in just a moment, but one of the funds that did drop this year from the school budget, but was basically taken over by the city, was the Health Youth Council. And so that money, while it was a decrease in our budget, it's being continued at the city level. So the program is still continuing. In terms of some of the COVID-related funds, and I know this was part of also the letter, I believe, that was requested from the city council, was that, and Dale, if you're still on, or Dr. Leclair, if you want to correct me, but I believe the numbers that I had was that we submitted $179,000 to the city for FEMA COVID-related reimbursement and $108,000 through the CARES Act. Does that sound correct, Superintendent Leclair?
It does sound correct. We haven't heard anything from the city yet, if any of that has been approved or not.
Right. And then there was another grant that had options to be able to gain COVID-related costs, and that closed on December 31st. And we fully submitted all of the optional funds into that to be able to seek fulfillment for that grant. One of the other sort of updates coming out of Q1 was that we were still sort of uncertain about some of the building costs to be able to be looking at the use of our buildings in COVID-related times. But one of the really great opportunities that Dale and Superintendent Leclair were able to obtain was working with the Massachusetts State Department of Education. They ended up not just seeking sort of consolidated funding source for contracts for air purifiers, but actually were able to provide the city of East Hampton with 100 air purifiers that are going to be able to be used around our buildings to be able to help get our air quality up to the anticipated Oshry standards that were being required. So that's a great win for our city. Sort of doesn't fit into any dollars or grants that we obtained, but it just obviously cuts out costs that we would otherwise have to be spending. And I think that was roughly $35,000, $40,000 worth of air purifiers, if I remember correctly, is in that range. So those were sort of some of the highlights coming out of Q1. And then the other conversation was around the mayor's direction as we head into the FY 22 budget development year. The mayor is requiring that we put forward a budget with a directive of a negative 2.5% budget loss from this year. This budget year was already at a 0% increase, and now we're being requested to look at ways that we can have a negative 2.5% budget loss, but with no staff cuts, which will certainly be a very big challenge for the superintendent and for the leadership team to be reviewing. Obviously, instruction is one of our largest line items, so to have a negative 2.5% budget and have no staff cuts is going to be very challenging. So they're already beginning to meet as a leadership team. And I believe our dates for upcoming meetings are also starting to be set as well. So we'll be able to announce those shortly. I think, believe it, the next January meeting will be able to announce when our budget meetings will be happening.
That was my next question. Thank you. Excellent. Policy. I'm just surprised not to see a ton of policy for us to go over. Do we have an update?
I would love to give you a ton, but nobody else wants to meet because they're already on the computer 24/7. So I totally get it. Typically, in the middle of January, MASCE will distribute changes and updates to current policies. I have not seen that yet. I am definitely keeping my eyes open, and I will let you guys know when I do receive them.
Okay. Thank you. How about a collaborative update? Is there one?
Sure. We haven't met since the last meeting because of the holidays and whatnot. But I will say that the winter schedule of professional development has been released from the collaborative. So anyone out there interested in that, check it out. I'm looking forward to our meeting at the end of this month. And what I'm expecting will be discussions around their own strategic planning, which will be happening this year, and the search for a new executive director as Bill Deal has left as of the beginning of this year. So I look forward to sharing back after that.
And that meeting will happen after our next meeting, right?
It will, yes.
So we'll hear back in February. Okay, thank you. Lori, do you have an update for us?
Yes, the COVID response team has been meeting weekly. I want to remind everybody that we are so fortunate to not only have an epidemiologist who volunteers her precious time, but we also have three nurses, a pediatrician. We have our head of the Health Department, who is also on our team with the administrators who attend. And we continue to discuss the dire situation of this pandemic that has now put our own community in red. We hear parents and students that they want to participate in sports and that it is difficult to be tested. But we also learned that it is so dire right now that it is impossible to do proper tracing. They actually hired a nurse in the city to be able to help with this. And I'd like to quote, "People who are testing positive have minor symptoms, so they're not getting tested." She said, "We need to get people back to our original mindset of any symptom to stay at home and get tested." And she said that "we now are facing the results of lots of people not doing what they should have been doing during the holidays, visiting other people." As I said, we hear that people sometimes have trouble to get their children to be tested. I know there are long lines at HCC. You can go to Amherst where it is easier. You make an appointment. People are in and out of there. They actually say that it takes longer to drive there than what you actually have to wait when you're there. And I do have a very important quote from our epidemiologist. She said, "On the epidemiological side of things, when the problem is that testing isn't accessible, you don't lower your safety standards and just say, 'Oh, well, then there's no need to test then.' It's a further sign of the situation." And she said, "If parents are upset by this, then why complain to the school committee and East Hampton Public Schools? You should be upset, but you should contact the state. You should contact your state rep. You should tell them that students need to be readily tested if they're going to be able to participate in things such as sports and get our students back into the classrooms." Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So on to our superintendent report.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up, I appreciate Lori giving that summary of our COVID response team meeting yesterday. The first piece of my agenda tonight is the COVID-19 metrics and reopening. And I think Lori summarized it beautifully. Just to kind of put a pin in it, I will say, if it's not clear to people watching, last week, on Thursday night, when the state data came out for East Hampton, we moved into the red. which means we had over a 5% positivity rate, which is very high. And I think that percentage-wise or case count-wise, it's higher than many other communities around us. And from my conversations with our city public health agent, Bree, we should expect to see very similar numbers this week because this is the result of people moving around over the holiday break and, you know, taking part in some behaviors that maybe were out of the, the norm they had been doing. So this is, this is obviously not the time when really any schools are thinking about bringing students back right now. We're in a tough, we're in a tough situation and until we can bring these numbers down in the city significantly down, we really can't discuss bringing students back into the buildings. And I will say, as I've said to this group before, you know, I, along with all of my administrators, we want students back in the buildings. My administrators are in the buildings every day. They're there. They're waiting for the kids to come. So, you know, we are, we are anticipating students return, but we need the community to help us to make that come to fruition. So that's my, my take on that. Right now, we're at the average cases for a seven-day average for about 100,000 people in the Hampshire, Hamden and Franklin County is averaging around 53. We need to be much lower than that in order to bring students back according to the metrics that we have agreed to as a school committee, what we want to see. We need to be out of the red zone. That's obvious, but we also need to get the case numbers down, both in our community and in this, in this region of the state. So for those that are still wondering, you know, the, the first group that we want to bring back will be students with that have special needs. We are really wanting to get those students back into our buildings as soon as possible. So I am hoping that this little surge that we've had over the holiday break will start to decline, maybe after the next week or so, if people have resumed some of their safe behaviors now. So fingers crossed, next time we meet, we'll have some better news about the numbers in the community, but we're not there right now.
Do you have the metrics that we get from Megan that we usually put up for the public to see? Do you have that ready?
I don't have it ready, but I can pull it.
Well, I mean, at the ready, I kind of surprised you with it. I'm looking for it myself.
Yes. So Megan just put it out. She, she start, she was initially doing it on Mondays, but now with the information coming out on, on Thursday, she started doing it on Fridays now. So let me just bring it up in all my minutia here. And did you, is the screen? I have it up on my screen. I'm just going to share now. Can you see that?
Yeah. Yep. Thank you. Yes, we can see it.
Okay. So, so the way that Megan has kind of set this up for people watching on Zoom, you want more of the highlighted yellow area to be more to the right than you do to the left. When it's more to the left in the red zone, that's bad. That's when we don't want to necessarily have students in school because spread in the community is so high. So this is all from the data that is put out by the state on Thursday nights. And she also pulls through other data sources and, you know, brings this information to us at the end of every week. So you can see, we don't have any highlighted yellow in the safe column to the right. Where, where we have a few in the medium area. And percent tests that are positive in the region, you'll note that if you can see down here, East Hampton is high, higher than Hampshire County as a whole. Symptomatic testing is pretty widely available. Asymptomatic testing is available for those exposed. And asymptomatic testing for general population with long waits is what we're experiencing in Western Mass. I don't know if that's true across the state, but I think that there is evidence of that here. And the transmission rate is over the number one, which we don't want to see it over the number one. So, and the rest is all in the red zone. So that is not what we want to see. So I will, as I said, Laurie did a nice summary, so I will move on to the next piece this evening, which is an update on student progress. You requested information on this at our December school committee meeting. So I have invited the administrators here tonight, but what I do want to start off with saying as they're getting, as they're getting ready to speak to you is across the state, the Department of Ed recently released information on structured learning time. Every school district in the state was required to submit information on the amount of hours students were receiving instruction, live instruction on a daily basis, whether they were in full remote or hybrid. And every school district provided that information. And they then culled through all of that information and sent out responses to all of the school districts. The criteria that they set was that for school districts in remote, of which we are one, we should have, and I'm going to read it to you specifically, we should be aiming for providing students with access to synchronous instruction every day, which we do in East Hampton. And we should be operating a remote schedule for students that has access to at least 40 hours of synchronous instruction over a 10-school-day period averaged across the grades in the remote model. And we have met those criteria. And we were given kind of the, the seal of approval by the Department of Ed that we are doing what we need to do. So as the administrators this evening talk to you about some of the successes and some of the challenges that they have faced, I want everyone to at least have the background information that we are meeting the standards set by the Department of Education. Not, only about two-thirds of the school districts in the state were meeting that criteria and they have until next week to make adjustments. In East Hampton, we didn't have to change our schedules because we were already doing what was required and we have been all year long. So our students have been getting the optimal amount of time in remote instruction in a synchronous model. So I am going to begin tonight. They're going to give you a little synopsis and it might vary at each level of how students are achieving at their level. They're going to talk to you about attendance, if it's been an issue at their level. And any other anecdotal information or data points that they want to share with you, they'll do that. Okay? So I'll start with Judy or am I, am I going with Judy and Jill together?
We'll go with Judy and Jill together.
Okay.
And Andrea McCollum is on the call too.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jill Pasquini-Torkia. I'm the principal of Center Peppin School. And I'd like to just share a couple of things. The student progress at the elementary level is a little bit more difficult to quantify because we, instead of assigning letter grades or numeric grades to students, we use a standards-based report card. And we report on student progress toward achieving those standards. We have just given before December break, the first report card. And one of the things that I'd like to talk about tonight is how on the report card, we have reduced the number of standards that we are reporting on based on information from the state about standards that teachers should focus on for the year. So I'll use third grade as an example. In third grade, last year, we reported on a total of 44 standards. But this year, teachers are only reporting on 34 standards. So in reading, the, the information that went to parents is reporting on a total of four standards this year as opposed to six standards. In writing, they're reporting on two standards as opposed to four. Language, five instead of six. Speaking and listening stayed at two. In math, last year, grade three was reporting on nine standards and this year they're reporting on six standards. In science, went from two to one and social studies remained at two. And we also report to parents on social skills and work habits, but we changed the wording on those to reflect remote learning. So at each grade level, we have seen a decrease on the number of standards that teachers are focusing on, that teachers are assessing and that teachers are reporting out to parents. Judy and Andrea, did you have anything to add to that?
I do not. I think, oh, thank you.
In, in terms of attendance, at the elementary level, I think across the board, attendance has been pretty good. At Peppin School, we have an overall attendance of 95%. And at Center School, we have an overall attendance of 96%. We are meeting with teachers at all grade levels on a weekly basis. And one of the agenda items during those meetings is student attendance. We're monitoring attendance very closely. We're in touch with families consistently. Our greatest challenge at the elementary level, at least for Center Peppin School, is at the kindergarten level. And there could be a variety of reasons for that. I think that a lot of kindergarten students have a difficult time sustaining and, and being live during the day on Zoom for long periods of time. So we, at that level, we have 10 students who have five or more days absent. Even though, as I described a minute ago, our overall attendance rate has been fantastic. But in grades one through, one through four, we have five or less students who have more than five days absent. So
very similar numbers at Maple School.
We're, we're, we're doing, we're doing pretty well. And when, when we're in conversations with parents, there's a variety of reasons why students have to be absent. So, and you know, some of them, I guess the attendance situation was more significant at the beginning of the year and we've seen an improvement ever since. So I'm, I'm pleased with the way attendance is going at the elementary school and I think my colleagues would agree.
Yep. And, and similar to Center Peppin, Maple is at a 94% attendance rate. And again, similar to Jill, kindergarten and for us preschool are the areas where we're seeing the greatest numbers of chronic absenteeism. And we also do a weekly check-in. So I'm aware of every child that is struggling with attendance and we're addressing it with families and outside agencies and support systems, trying to make sure that, that gets, that gets remedied. We've had pockets of children whose families have gotten ill and needed to take some time off. But overall, grades one through four, we have very, very solid attendance. And that's what is reported by DSE when we're looking at chronic absenteeism.
One of the things that, that Dr. Leclerc asked us to talk about a little bit also was the extracurricular activities at the elementary level. We have not had an opportunity for a lot of our extracurriculars this year at the elementary level. One of the things that we are doing is offering a ukulele class to our grade four students. And that would be optional for students. We've also had a few all-school assemblies that are limited in number. And we've also had some activities that have been sponsored, sponsored by the PTO in the evening that students can attend. They're, they're all-school activities that students can participate in. But beyond that, there are not a lot of extracurriculars going on at this time in remote learning.
Thank you. And let's hear from Meredith and Dan at the middle school. Meredith, we can't hear you. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Good evening. At, at the middle school, our attendance, very similar to the elementary school. Right now, we're at about 97%. Our attendance is actually better in the remote setting than it is when we're in school. We've, we've put some, we've tried to make our day as close to being in school as possible. So teachers do take attendance in homeroom and then in each of the four academic classes, they take attendance again. So we, we, like Jill said, we keep close tabs on what's going on with kids. And when we see absences, we address it right away with the families. We also have parents call because our attendance goes, goes home. A call goes home when a student isn't in class and sometimes parents aren't aware of that. So we do get calls to, to double check. They're really not there and we say, no, they're really not there. So then, you know, parents usually take care of that. But at 97%, things are, attendance-wise are going really well. Student achievement, we had our first report, our first trimester report card go out on the beginning of December. And overall, our, our grades look very similar to when we're in school. The, you know, the small number of kids that are struggling, continue to struggle in the remote setting. Really the same kids that struggle when we're in school, but our grades look very similar. Our teachers have worked really hard to deliver the curriculum, just like as if we were in school. Of course, in a remote setting, there are challenges that prevent it to be exactly like when we're in school, but they are working to do that. Our schedule at Whitebrook has not changed a lot from when we first closed down last March. We, we made our schedule then. We didn't have to, but we did. And our teachers got on board with the remote learning really early and has really continued to be very similar. They've added in a lot of things. They've had a lot of professional development with new technologies and new tools to make the delivery better for students, but our overall schedule and the way we're doing things has remained consistent for almost a year now. So overall, things are, are going very well for us in a remote setting. We still, Dan and I are still really, really anxious to have that learning center model for that handful of kids at each grade level that remote learning doesn't work for. We're very anxious to get them in the building. We have staff that are ready to, to work with these students to help them become more part of their classrooms. So that's, that's something that we're really looking forward to, hopefully as soon as the, the numbers and the metrics allow for it. Our, we do have a few curricular activities. Our band director, Pat Lennon, has just done an amazing job keeping our, our band program going, which, you know, we, we feel like is our greatest asset at Whitebrook. And he has been giving band lessons all throughout. And he has been giving band lessons all throughout the day and having full band rehearsals. Hopefully, most people got to hear the, the presentation they put together before the holidays. I, I mean, it was, it was phenomenal, and the same for chorus. There was a chorus performance that was released, and our choral director, Brandon Goulet, also is still having chorus after school. We also have art club, game club. Chris Abel, one of our PE teachers, is running a ski club, which looks different than it usually does. It's, parents have to come to the mountain. They have to drive because we can't be together in cars. And it's really kind of families coming to the mountain and skiing in small groups alone. But we had over 30 families participate last week. So it was, it was, been a very popular activity. And we also have our STRAT group, which is Students and Teachers Raising Awareness Together. Mr. Norman runs that on Fridays at lunchtime, and that also has continued. So we do have, you know, a few activities that we've been able to keep going in the remote setting.
Thank you. And let's hear from the high school, Bill and Sue.
Thank you, Allison. So I apologize, but I have a slideshow. So if I have sharing capability, then I will share. Yes?
Yes, yes. You're good.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna start by saying it has not been, in my estimation, a terrific semester for our students at East Hampton High School. I think, you know, the national, what we're reading in, in sort of the national literature would correspond to our experience here, that adolescents are, in particular, struggling with the social isolation and with not being with their teachers and with their students. So the data we're gonna share comes in two, two areas. Grades, specifically failure rates and attendance. And attendance will focus on our students who are, have excessive absences. We're doing some comparison data, so we have this current semester. There's this blue one. There'll also be some, some data on our special populations. And we'll compare that with, in the, in the grades, with our two most recent fully in-person semesters in an attendance to the last three. This semester here with the line through it is last spring, where none of the data really reflects anything that is worth looking at in terms of comparative, because we left in March. So to begin, the slide shows the percentage of students who fail or are failing at least one class. So in the spring of 1819, 2018, 2019, I'm not that old. The, there were 9% of our students who finished this semester with at least one failing class. In the fall of last year, that was at about 6%. So so far this year, as of yesterday, 16% of our students are failing at least one class. So it's pretty clear to me that this top half of this graph is directly related to remote learning and to the effects of COVID. So naturally, this is a number that is very concerning and alarming. So we have taken a number of both proactive and reactive interventions, specifically some of the interventions that we've put in place. So just proactively, the teacher professional development that has been ongoing throughout the semester on, you know, to try and figure out how to do this work remotely has been exhaustive, and it continues. And we continue to take feedback from our students and from parents, and teachers share with each other so that all teachers can develop a repertoire of best practices for what works with students remotely. But the challenges are significant for our teachers. Adolescents don't like to be seen. They don't like to be the only one talking in a meeting. So, and oftentimes, their technology doesn't allow them to be seen and heard. So oftentimes, teachers are speaking, as you've all experienced in, in these meetings, to a series of black boxes, and oftentimes, there's no way to really correct that. And not getting that feedback and students not being able to meet with teachers is really having a profound effect on, on the students more than anything else. Other interventions that we put into place, at the end of the first quarter, we took a look at the data and realized we really needed to, we had some students who their first quarter grades were so low that we wrote that it was going to really hamper their ability to pass for the semester. So we put together a plan called the You Can Do It Plan. And it allowed students the opportunity to earn an incomplete for the first quarter and have additional time, a couple of extra weeks, including the Thanksgiving break, to make up that work and bring that first quarter grade, which had already included, up as close to a 60 and to a 60, if possible, not above, but to at least a 60, which put them in a position where in the second quarter and the final assessment were decent shape, then they'd be in a much better place to pass. So again, we were looking at about 18% of our students who were in that position, and many, many, many took advantage of it. We replicated a similar plan just before the winter break. You're trying to be a little more proactive, and before the students actually failed, give them another, here's, here's some work that you can do over the break. Not provide any regular homework, but just for students who really needed it, here's a packet of work for you to work on, and these assignments. Each teacher met with kids individually in the days leading up to the break and provided those that needed it with some work they could do to catch up. I will say that it dropped, when we went into the break at 18% failure rate, we came out of it at about 60%. So, and I'm assuming that that's gonna continue to come down as that work gets moving. We've been printing and delivering materials to students. So it's been really clear that some students really miss their pencils and their papers. So, so we have made an effort, and I would say that my assistant principal, Sue Wilson, has been really just done yeoman's work on this, where teachers will get work together electronically, send it to our, to our media specialist in the library. She will print everything for people, put them together in packets. And if a parent can come to the school and pick it up, great. If not, Sue will go to the house and drop it off in the doorstep. So we've been getting that sort of system back and forth, and that's really helped some students to really, like, they can work so much better when they have stuff and paper. The individual outreach by teachers, members of the student support team, and I will say the tech department, who, you know, every time somebody calls and says, my, my homework's not working, we put in a ticket. And I know that ticket system has just been inundated, but I will say that, you know, so many of our students have had their issues resolved through that system. But, you know, individual calling and reaching out to families, emails, meetings that we've had, going and, you know, having conversations with people, all of that has, has helped some kids quite a bit. And two interventions that are coming up, that are not in place yet, are connected to our final assessment. So at the end of each semester, there's usually, there is always a final assessment, either an exam or a project or a presentation or some other way of, some, some sort of assessment for the entire course, and that's typically counted as 20% toward the final grade. We've reduced that to 10% so that if students are doing pretty well, if they have a bad final assessment, particularly if that's a final exam, one high-stakes exam, you know, sometimes those students will test well, then a bad final exam won't have the same impact of 10% that it would have 20%. So instead of it being 40, 40, 20, it's now 45, 45. And that's very helpful for our students who are already passing. But for the students who are already, who are failing coming into the final assessment, that's actually, that works backwards, right? Because now I have less of an opportunity to get my, with a final exam, to get my grade above 60. So the way we, the last intervention that we are doing is we're allowing students who have a failing grade, a failing average from quarter one, quarter two, if they pass the final assessment, that we will give them a final grade of 60 so that they can pass the class and earn credit. I'm, I'm okay with this as a, as an educator, because I believe a well-crafted final assessment is as good a measure of what the student learned as quarter-long grades, which are affected by so many other things. And in particular, this year, this semester, where, when we look back and see, you know, this much blue on this graph, it's really not about, you know, there's this many students who would probably not pass anyway, but what's going on with here? If we don't do something, we're really not being responsive to their needs. So those are the interventions that have been put into place, and that we're hoping these final interventions will give more students an opportunity to pass and earn credits. We also need to be, you know, on, on the administrative side, there's also a concern that if that many students fail that many classes, it's going to really tax our schedule going forward, because we will need to have so many students repeating so many classes. So there's that added dynamic as well. I mean, the primary concern is obviously student learning and student achievement and their progress to a graduation. So I'm gonna, at this point, the next few slides, talk about our attendance, and then I'm gonna have Sue Wilson, the assistant principal, discuss the attendance, and then at the end, they'll come back and share some data regarding these special populations. Sue?
Great. Thanks, Mr. Evans. Hello, everyone. I'll be doing the next three slides, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide this information for you. This slide you can see is the percentage of students with 10 or more absences in at least one class. Just a reminder that 10-plus absences is the number to gain, or to gain credit in a class is nine absences, no more than nine absences per student handbook. Also, as a reminder, we take attendance in each of the classes. So just wanted to put that forward. What you see is the four semesters that Bill was talking about earlier, and you see basically 12% for the year of, the academic year of 1819, for both semesters. Comes down a little bit in the fall of 1920, and then down to 8% in this past fall, the semester that we're in right now. I'm gonna be explaining that reduction in just a minute. At the next slide, we're going to see the excused absences per, per year. So back in 1819.
Sue, can you just go back one slide, just for one more second? So we're talking 8% now in the fall?
That's correct, as of, as of yesterday.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
This chart represents the excused class absences for each of those four semesters also. And you can see the first three semesters are relatively consistent, all of them being just over 200 absences that were excused class absences. What you see is the last semester, the one that we're currently in, the fall of 2021, there were a little over 1,000 excused absences. Makes sense. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and we've needed to be open to excusing absences, and there's a couple of reasons that we do that. Here's the chart. Thank you, Bill, for going on to the next one. The, the reasons are, as you can see, we've separated them into some categories. There's various reasons. Technology, as we know, we've been talking about, is one of the reasons for excusing absences, and we're aware of the technology issues, and we're working to resolve them. Secondly, students have been learning remotely and have had social isolation. And with that comes some anxiety and depression. And we're attuned to that, and working in our student support team and with outside providers for excusing absences.
Sorry.
Additionally, we know of family and students that have had COVID, and we're working with them and obviously excusing those absences for medical reasons. I don't know about you, but I've tried, if you try to get a doctor's appointment, you have to just take what they give you. You don't really have too many choices for doctor's appointments, and our students are at that same measure. So we excuse absences for doctor's appointments. And lastly, the economics of what COVID has done is we see caregivers and parents out of work. We see our students working many more shifts. There, many of them are essential workers, working at local nursing homes, Biggie's, Big Y. Their shifts are often seven, eight, nine-hour shifts, and they're working more of them through the week. We take that into account for absences, and we do the best that we can. We appreciate the communication that parents and caregivers and students have with us, just like my colleagues. I agree with my colleagues that we're in constant communication and have outreach to our families. We have weekly student support team meetings, and one of the topics that's always addressed is attendance and how we can support our students and how we can support their attendance so that their learning is better. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. So yeah, so the overall picture on attendance is it's, it's better now, but that's a result of a lot of additional outreach and work and having to make accommodations for students to enter the classroom for this really important.
Bill, can you play with your audio a little bit? It's like you're underwater.
Sorry. I keep forgetting when I'm wearing these headphones to raise the microphone. What I just said was a bunch of stuff that you don't need to hear again. I was just pointing out that the, the attendance, fortunately, is, you know, sort of not overwhelming in terms of problematic attendance. But it's because of, this represents a lot of hard work by a lot of people to get to students and to find out what's happening and to be, you know, and for the student support team to really take a, a hard look and a compassionate look ultimately at what's happening with students. So, you know, all of these things are really real for so many of our kids. This final slide is a comparison of our special populations. And I'm looking at three distinct populations: our economically disadvantaged students, those that qualify for free and reduced lunch, our non-white students, and our students with disabilities, students with IEPs or 504 plans. And the way this chart works is that the blue represents the percentage that population is of our entire population. So in the school, 38% of our students are economically disadvantaged, 19% are students of color, and 29% have an IEP or a 504. These tan bars represent of the students that are currently failing a class, right? 63% of them are economically disadvantaged. 48% of them have an IEP or a, or a 504 plan, and 22% of them are students of color. So the real area of concern, clearly somewhat here, but really on either end of this, like, so 63% of the students that are failing a class are economically disadvantaged. It is really clear that this has had a significant impact on that population. The green bar represents the 10-plus absences. So of the students that are above the limit for the number of absences within the semester, 65% of those students are economically disadvantaged. 53% have an IEP or a 504, and 24% are students of color. So each one of our special populations is disproportionately represented in the- So each one of our special populations is disproportionately represented in the data when it comes to students that are failing or students that have a high number of absences. So of course, this is, you know, this goes to the core of our mission and it's, it's something that we are extraordinarily concerned about. It has been very, very frustrating to try and turn some of this data around. I would say that our team is working very, very hard to, to reach these people, to reach the families, to reach the students, and it's been very challenging. Remote learning for this group has been very difficult. You know, this, this committee acknowledged that getting special populations into the building was a high priority and you see why, you know, without that face-to-face contact, without sitting in a room with a teacher, they really do struggle. The economic disadvantaged students, you know, there's so many challenges that they face, the technology being, you know, one that jumps out, but obviously there are other challenges that they are dealing with in this particular format during COVID. So they're really struggling and we're, we're very concerned about, about that. So that's the data I would kind of stop sharing and allow for whatever questions and things like that.
So do any of the committee members have questions for any of the administrators at any level? Shannon?
Okay. Sorry, I was having trouble. So to Bill and Sue, I'm curious, on the last points that we were talking about, communication and things like that for economically disadvantaged as well as the students of color, one of the things that was pointed out to me is in the translation to Spanish on your emails, it's connecting parents to somebody who doesn't speak, doesn't speak Spanish. So I'm a little concerned about that. I just wanted...
Not sure I understand, Shannon.
So when you do the Google Translate or however it is...
It's translated through Power School, yeah.
So it automatically just translates it and you're not sending them to somebody who speaks Spanish? Like there's a point of contact listed, which is probably you. So if someone's calling, they're not calling someone who's speaking Spanish. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Correct. I, I think I understand what you're saying. So I'm sending emails out that are in English and in Spanish.
Yes.
But...
Not changing it to a contact person who knows the language when they're answering the phone? Like if a parent calls for information to whomever it is on the email, I don't know who it is because I don't see it, you know, whoever it is...
Right.
They're not getting somebody who's speaking the same language.
So when people respond to those emails, it goes either to me because I put in my email address because it's a blank email, an email to the entire community from me, or it, sometimes it goes to the tech department and they forward the, those responses to me. I'm not sure how, what the inner workings of that are, but certainly, you know, Cindy's been with us now and she's usually in the building and I, we have the ability to help, have her help us out. We also have the translation program. So if somebody does call, I can, and I can't get Cindy if it's somebody who speaks Spanish, I can always set up the call with the translator.
Okay.
I, I would say that that hasn't become an issue, but I don't know if that's because people are deciding that they don't want to try to reach out because they know I speak English or that I don't speak another language.
I just didn't know possibly, like on the contact information, maybe on the bottom you could add, you know, Cindy's information so that they can contact someone directly who speaks Spanish.
That's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Marissa.
It's really helpful to get, can you hear me?
Uh huh.
Should I take you back? Very good. It's really helpful to get this information. You know, I appreciate the reports on the attendance and it sounds like since the beginning of remote learning, we've been hearing about this protocol for interventions and monitoring students with chronic absenteeism, a lot of communication with families around what's happening, why are their students not making it to class? And I know as a, as a parent, I've experienced that personally as well from the school side. I'm trying to figure out how to square those reports with the reports from our city council members saying that there are many families out there without internet, whose students aren't able to access, it sounds like, any schooling because of lack of internet. Or, I don't know, if someone could, could speak to that, maybe the superintendent or maybe somebody else in the leadership team.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I am struggling with the same, the same question. And when I first received the, the concern, not expressed by the city council, but a different group, who was maybe in, in discussion with the city council, I reached out to that group and said, could you please share your data source with me? I would like to dive into this a little bit more. And I, they didn't share any, any data with me. So I, I'm left to wonder that as well. I mean, I, I, I can honestly say, just for background information, I think the administrators would attest to this, we talk about connectivity issues at least weekly in our leadership team meetings. If I get an email, I forward it to the appropriate administrator who responds to me by saying, let me call this parent and see what's going on. Or they work with the parent and we put a ticket in to get an issue resolved. So, you know, I'm, I'm often, I'm, you know, once, I've, I've gotten emails where people have emailed me and said, my son can't get on this morning. And then I shoot it out to everyone and say, whose child is this? You know, which, which building does this child belong to? And someone will say, my building? Let me call them and see what's going on and take care of it immediately. So I'm not sure. I mean, I, you know, I, I do acknowledge, even though I, I don't have quantifiable evidence, but I do acknowledge because of COVID, people are struggling financially. I do understand that and I'm sure the internet bills and, and many other bills are difficult to pay, but yeah, I mean, I, I ask the administrators at least weekly, are there any students that you, that, that teachers have, have not been in contact with and what's going on? You know, and the, the principals involved or they're getting DCF involved or counselors involved? And, I mean, I don't know if any of the, the administrators want to pipe up and, and provide any, anything anecdotally. Meredith?
Yeah. I mean, I know right now, like I don't believe we have any students in our school that don't have an internet connection, that don't have a working device. I know that it was said something about the ticket system. I mean, the ticket system has been amazing. I don't know how they do it so fast. When we have a parent call or a student email us that their Chromebook isn't working, it's not charging, they usually get a replacement that day. And if a parent can't come here, either Dan or I are delivering them to people's houses. I mean, we work really hard every single day to make sure that kids have what they need to be able to be connected with their classroom. So we, I, I believe that everyone in, in this school has an internet connection and a working device right now. And when things go wrong, we usually are able, with the, with the help of the tech department, replace something that's not working the same day. So, I mean, I think that's phenomenal with the number of students we have.
Rudy, did you want to add anything? And then go to Nicole.
Yeah, I would say the exact same thing at Maple. You know, our teachers have done a phenomenal job collaborating with the parents and the parents have done a phenomenal job communicating with teachers. And we know every child in the building, there's not one person at Maple that doesn't have, that isn't online. You know, we do have some attendance pocket issues, but we know why and they're not about technology. So that's, that's a, you know, just a given for us. I mean, it is, it is happening daily. And like Meredith said, the tech department has been phenomenal. We just, we get these things within hours and we get them out to families. And, and the same thing with Allison, we'll get a call, I mean, I've had, you know, we have some grandparents that are supporting the learning and my administrative assistant spoke with one grandfather like every morning for weeks just to get everybody on, you know, and that's what we do. And, and now, you know, it's working. So there's been a lot of above and beyond by the teachers and, and everybody to make sure that everybody's connected, but there's nobody falling through the cracks that I know of.
Nicole, you wanted to speak?
You're on mute.
Nicole, you're on mute.
Sorry. I have three, three kind of suggestions, questions. So one, with the state putting out those standards and they've been lessened because of the situation we are now, is there a way to attach to those standards a like dashboard for student performance around attendance, around, you know, informal, you know, I, I want to say quizzes, I know that's an ancient word now, or, or tests. So we're seeing what the standards are and where we are more than quarterly. That's one. Two, as far as internet connectivity and absence, could we get a report by school and by precinct that shows us that information? And then three, can this all be done, or I think it can be done, by pulling the information on the backend of whatever system, educational system that the kids are logging into as well as mobile hotspots from what, and what I gather is not every student is, is accessing internet from a hotspot, like they might have that service, but, but I'm just thinking, how can we get into the backend of this and compare what's happening with our students in real time and not just anecdotes to the standards that they're being measured against, but also this whole back and forth about attendance and connectivity? It just seems with technology, we can go into the backend and pull out data and publish that once a week, like, like we do with the, the COVID-19 metrics.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can talk to, I think you raised some good points. I'm not sure I can do everything that you ask or, or, I think I could pull information by grade level. I don't think, we don't have it set up by precinct. I mean, that's not, we don't get into the city council business. I don't know, even know where the precincts, the boundary lines are.
Yeah, you could geotag them. Actually, the school is, school data is by precinct, it's, it's, and a lot of federal agencies use that for Title I as well as food and, and where it's on our census track now. I mean, yes, I understand it's a political legislative body, but it's not, but, but school data can be sorted by, by precincts, by wards.
Let me see, let me see on our Power School. I mean, I think that if I'm understanding you correctly, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, at all levels, we're required to take attendance for every class. So a student actually needs to be physically logged in throughout the day to be in that class. So we can absolutely run data on how many students are in, you know, each period, at each grade level, each day, you know, in each building. That, you know, is something doable? I think that, and we could probably put it in a format that's easy to read. I'm not sure we could discern whether they're using a hotspot or not, but on the flip side, we know the hotspots that we've distributed to families. So we could probably play with some, some of that. Let me get with the IT department tomorrow and see what we can extrapolate from some of the systems that we have in place.
I just think that, well, certainly we want to know how the students, I'm just listening to the questions, but also, you know, listening to the administrators on this call and the work that they're doing in the outreach, that also deserves to be presented to the public in, in a standardized format to, to acknowledge these, you know, the, the efforts. I mean, and also the pivots as this is like, we think we're going back to school, then we weren't, we are, tracking down students, tracking down families, language issues. I mean, I think that there should be something on our website that, you know, tracks, of course, our students' performance, but also what, not just the administrators, but the teachers and the educators are, are doing as, as well and being, you know, proactive and getting that up. You know, maybe if it is Power School, you know, it, it's easy as like a, a standard report. I mean, even some basic standards that just automatically run once a week and, and again, putting it up next to the, the weekly form and, and not to, and I forgot, I should have said this in the beginning, so the wellness, the school COVID team, wellness team that, that Laurie spoke about is, is truly exceptional. I've had an opportunity to work with some of them as well as other epidemiologists from UMass and I, I think it's pretty ready to roll out. So again, for standardized, we're taking the, the city's data and Hampshire County data and we've put it into one report that reflects what's going on for city as well as school rather than have two different measuring tools that are like basically two graphics. So when somebody looks at what's going on in the schools, it's what's going on in the city as far as opening and access to public services. So I also, I, I guess, I should have said that first because that's what I'm thinking about with the standard dashboard and attendance and connectivity and that, and then the last around connectivity, once we get some, some data, we certainly, we can opt in, we can try another internet provider if that will, will help it when we're talking about connectivity and access AT&amp;T and to that, and, and, and maybe this is happening now, we, we for staff and students certainly could, I, I think it's, AT&amp;T has a, a deal right now and the city will pay for that hotspot if needed and that connectivity through AT&amp;T through the end of the school year and longer if, if we need to. So Allison, I'm, I'm going to send you over that AT&amp;T pamphlet and it's, it's AT&amp;T FirstNet, which is what the city uses for public safety and, and something else, public safety and EMS. So most of our city phones are on FirstNet. So I will send that info out, but again, like to have the, a hard number presented every week about connectivity and, and those things would, would be helpful, I think, for everyone in the, in the public and, you know, for teachers, I mean, and, and administrators backing up the work that, that they're doing and I'm, I'm thankful for it. I, I thank you all. I know very hard times and you're in the thick of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Laurie?
I truly appreciate what you have just said, Mayor, because sitting here and listening to everybody, there have been so many discrepancies. We have heard from two city councillors who've said they've knocked doors in their district. They've told us that there isn't connectivity. We have heard that they have trouble being able to communicate with schools. I also know, I'm thrilled that we have somebody who is bilingual now in the position of our diversity and inclusion coordinator, if I have her title right, Cindy Mohica. And I'm thrilled that we have somebody that can speak to people in Spanish. There are programs that facilitate ongoing communication among parents, administrators and teachers. And I, I mean, there's one that I use that's called Talking Points where you just, at the, the beginning of the year, you send out a text message and then that immediately is translated into all the languages necessary and parents can be in constant communication. I have no idea how much something like that costs a district, but I do know that... But I do know that the CARES funding has been reinstated again. So I'd like to hear the data, the actual numbers. How many people cannot communicate, not only in Spanish, but other languages that are representative of our students and families here in the district? And, and I really applaud the administrators and the teachers who reach out to the families when students are absent and when students are failing. What worries me and what I see and what I hear from educators across the state, across the country, when students check in, they say they're there, but they're really not there. And there are expectations that are, are not followed where camera usage is involved. And I realize that some families have issues and kids don't want to be on the camera, but it really presents problems when you see that students are in attendance, but they really aren't if they're checking out. And there has to be a way for teachers to be able to continually, even if they don't want to have their camera on, make sure that they're engaged and that they're working. So, Mr. Evans?
Thanks for bringing that point up. So at the high school, what the requirement is, is that the teachers don't submit attendance until the end of a particular block. And the student has to provide some evidence of being present, either through the chat or by turning on their camera or some other means that this teacher can identify. And there have been some instances where the class is over, everybody's gone and the student's black box is still there. And they haven't responded to anything. And in those instances, the teachers are instructed to mark that person an absence. Because yeah, I mean, for a 16-year-old to wake up and turn on their computer and then fall back asleep at, you know, at eight o'clock in the morning is not that surprising. So that happens sometimes. But we do have that safety or that, that procedure built in so that, or have a sense that the attendance is as accurate as possible.
We, we have the same thing at the middle school.
Well, I appreciate your clarifying that. And I know it's such challenging times for everybody. But I believe with these discrepancies that we're hearing, we have to work to find solutions and work together as a community and get through this pandemic and bring down the numbers and get our kids back into school. But I thank everyone on this call tonight because I know you're on this call because you care. So let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
So I do have a question because given the information we got from the city councilors today, has that information been shared with you? Are you aware of the houses that were stopped at? And the outcome of those conversations? Has that information been shared with you?
No.
Okay, so it would be very beneficial if you could perhaps reach out to them and if that information was shared because we can't do anything if we don't know about that. Shannon?
I just, I kind of want to respond to what, what you just asked, Cindy. It was my understanding that when they were doing the canvassing, they did not take any names.
Okay.
Because they wanted people to feel comfortable talking to them.
Gotcha.
You know, it, it, I'm concerned with, you know, I am so pleased with the numbers that are coming out, like from the elementary schools and stuff like that. I'm really concerned about the 3%. And, and how are we, what can we do to make this better? You know, I, I've talked to a few people and, you know, as far as like the lunch situation is, is concerned. You know, we need to, we need to somehow find out who's not getting the food that they were getting in the spring when we delivered by bus. Why can't we continue to do that? My dad has offered to deliver meals. You know, um, you know, he's retired, he has nothing else to do. He's like, yes, I want to help. And I know there's other people who do. And the resources are there to help. How do, how do we get there? And why don't we know who this handful of people are? We should know this already.
Right. So that is also my next question about the, the food. So my question is, we have a list of families receiving food during the summer and during the spring of last year, and we delivered all summer by bus. Do we have a, a list of who's receiving food now and picking it up? And are we able to go back, you know, and compare the two lists to find out who those families are?
Can I, I don't know if Dale's on the call, but I just want to clarify. We provided bus transportation when the state of Massachusetts was in a state of emergency and everything was shut down. And there was, nothing was, was open anywhere. That's when we utilized our buses for transportation. In the summer, just to be clear, we had three sites for families to pick up. We had the high school, we had Maple, and we had something Terrace over by Eastworks. But our satellite site, our third satellite site had very little, nobody really showed up to it. Maple and the, the high school was still the largest and Maple was the second largest. But the other site really had none. So, and, and we didn't have buses in the summer because we don't run busing in the summer. We don't pay for transportation in the summer. So, and in the fall, honestly, I, I, I think, you know, I may, I may be naive, but our hope was that we would get back in school, you know, early, earlier than where we're sitting at right now. But we have been running buses because we have students going to VoC school every day and students going to out-of-district placements. So we don't have extra buses that were available in the spring when the state was shut down. Now the state's not shut down and really even our community is not really shut down. So we don't have extra buses. We have buses running every day. Now, at one point, and Dale's going to look into this, at one point, Dale did try, I think before we even started the utilizing the buses in the spring, Dale managed volunteers and coordinated volunteers all over the city. It took a lot of her time. There was no one else that, that had the time to do that job.
I offered.
Well,
I did.
And maybe you could do it, maybe you could do it now. So maybe you should reach, I don't know if Dale's here tonight or not.
Give me the list of people who normally are on the lunch program and I will start calling. Or I'll find people to help me call because I don't.
At our, we have about, we have 100 meals being picked up daily right now. At our highest, we were at 200. That was at our highest.
100, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
And we have people who are willing to deliver.
Right. And we do, we, we do have a way of knowing who that 100 is, who is not picking up their meals, right? We should be able to look back and forth.
We can be, we can look back on the 100 that are no longer accessing it, yes. Yes. And, and just to make it clear, Dale still receives messages from families now. Some families flow in and out of the program for various reasons. They leave the area or their, you know, their situation has changed. People email Dale all the time to go on and off the program. So she keeps up with that consistently.
Right, but it just seems like if we were serving 200 and now we're serving 100, we need to check on who those people are.
Yeah.
Allison, or, uh, sorry, Cindy. We, we can't check on who they are because everyone is eligible for meals right now. And we don't ask family name when they pick up the meals. We give anyone who comes a meal. So we don't know who the 200 were then and the 100 are now.
We may have some address, we may have addresses.
You must have some addresses because you were delivering.
Addresses for when we were delivering.
Right. Okay.
We, we also have an additional food program, Maple and Whitebrook. It's a nonprofit. It's a weekend backpack program that delivers meals to families that, we offered it to everyone in the school. We have about 35 to 40 families that participate every week and they bring them big bags of food on Friday and they deliver it to their house. So I know that some of our families that were picking up food are now doing that program. So, and I don't, I don't know which, you know, if there's crossover, but we do have that additional resource that I know many families at Maple are also taking part in that as well as at Whitebrook.
It's the power, the Pioneer Valley Power Pack program run by Shelley Marsh. And she works with Robin Byalecki over at the community center.
I was just going to ask if that's Rob.
Yeah, she's, she's not, I mean, she, it's not in, it's not in affiliation with Robin, but I know that they've collaborated. But we put it in the bulletin, I mean, when the, you know, newsletter every time it goes home and we always get more and more families. So that's, that we can increase enrollment every time we get a call. But that goes home every Friday.
So just to piggyback on something Julianne said, because I don't, I'm not sure, we haven't said this probably in a while. But just to clarify for people, we're not doing free and reduced lunch this year because instead, we applied for a waiver so that we can serve any child that comes for a meal, that wants a meal, we'll serve them a meal. They don't need to qualify for a free meal. We don't charge anyone. We don't charge anyone anything at all. So there's no, you have to fill out a form to qualify for free or reduced lunch. We did that on an emergency basis in March and we've continued to complete the paperwork for that. We did it in the summer, we did it in the fall and it was supposed to only go through December. And then they extended it again through the end of the school year. So unlike some of our neighboring communities that are still doing, students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, we give a meal to, for any child, 0 to 18, that wants one. And we don't, I mean, honestly, if, if someone from another community is, is driving up and getting, we're not, we're not looking at it. You know, we're giving a meal to anyone that needs it.
And I get that. And I understand Julianne that, that we, you know, we're offering this to everybody and we're not taking names. But if we were delivering food, I'm just thinking, if we were delivering food before, could we be checking at least with those families to see if they need delivery now?
I, I think we, I think we could do that, Cindy. I think Dale has, I don't want to speak for Dale, but I believe Dale has already been doing that to some extent. A lot of those families communicate directly with her and say, I no longer need this. Or conversely, you know, there's a, there's a problem and I do need this. So I think that Dale has a lot of that contact information. So she would probably be the point person that I could speak to.
Because I, I, I'm just thinking it would be beneficial because if you have people who needed delivery before, chances are there's going to be a number who would need that delivery now. And it would just be nice to know that we've reached out to all of them and see if they, they need it now. Mayor?
Yeah, so I understand the, the program and I, I think it's great. And I'm thrilled that we, we got the waiver every time we applied. Is it possible to go back before the waiver and, and probably before the waiver, when we were doing free and reduced lunches? Take that list, scrub it against what Dale has. And at least we have now a quote unquote canvas list to check in with those families and say, hey, you know, how are you on food? Do you have a problem with transportation or, or whatnot? You know, and, and kind of scrub those two lists for some kind of a baseline? I, I completely understand that also too, we need to be cognizant of, of privacy and personal data and whatnot. And, and again, everybody, you know, everybody in the school, like every other department and all of us are, are flat out, but to get this, this info, you know, can we scrub those two lists? And contact those families directly and say, how are you doing with food? Do you need transport? I don't, maybe, you know, that's a way to check for internet. I mean, you've got to think that the folks who were supplementing their household with food aren't, aren't in a better position now. I mean, I hope some, but, but at least it's a good baseline. It's an idea that popped in my head.
And again, I am more than happy to do anything that needs to be done. Whether it's coordinating people for delivery or making phone calls. I have no problem doing that.
Thank you. So before I move off of the topic of student achievement and in attendance, I, I just want to thank the administrators. I think that you can see that they spend an inordinate amount of time on this. And, you know, I really asked them tonight to really be honest with you and, and demonstrate that, you know, the good, the bad and the ugly. And I don't mean to make light of this, but I want to be clear to everyone that remote learning, and I, I said it before, I'll say it again, it is not equal to in-person learning. We know that. We acknowledge that. And, you know, our goal is really to get students back in school. That is what we are working towards every day. I think Bill's slide with the economically disadvantaged and the students with disabilities, you know, demonstrates that we need to get these students back in school. The longer they're out of school, the more challenging it's going to be for us to help get them back to a good place. So I don't want to sugarcoat that. I want everyone to know that, you know, we're struggling with this as, as every other community is as well. You know, it's not all perfect and we don't want to put information out there that everything is ideal. But when I tell you that it is taking up a huge amount of time, you know, checking in with families, checking in with teachers, connecting students with counselors, working on mental health issues, working on attendance issues, this is a huge challenge. And they're rising to the occasion. The administrators, the teachers, they're all rising to the occasion and doing what needs to be done. But, you know, I, I wanted to put that out there and, and give them the praise that they deserve for sharing this information tonight and being a little vulnerable with all of you, that not everything is going perfectly. There are definitely some challenges. But that's what we're dealing with and we're doing the best that we can, given the resources that we have. But Bill didn't mention one thing and the other buildings did. So I'm just going to call on him one more time and put him on the spot. Bill, the extracurricular activities, I just wanted to give you a minute to talk about that.
Yeah, thank you, Allison. I did, I did make some notes.
And put that mic thing.
I think I sound better when nobody can hear me. Thank you. Now Sue has something to make fun of me of.
Yes.
So we have been able to have a lot of extracurricular activities. Meredith mentioned the ski club, that's a high school, middle school joint venture. So one of my teachers and one of her teachers oversees that. They had their first event last Wednesday. And again, individual buses, no going into the lodge, no, really like it's, you're there, but you're kind of there on your own. They, they organized it and got it together for, for the group. We've had, the GSA continues to meet, student council continues to meet, all of this remotely. They're doing cooking remotely. So a number of extracurricular activities are happening. And activities are happening. And, and that's great because we know that that really helps students stay connected to school and helps them have some fun along with the other stuff. Sue, did you want?
Drama Club also, I just wanted to give a shout out to them. They just participated in the 24-hour play that happened over the weekend. So where they wrote a play and then are putting it together. So Drama Club for that and they'll be, they're working on putting on a show.
A Zoom show, which, you know, staging a Zoom show is pretty interesting, as Andy Paulus could tell us. So yes, we have been having extracurricular activities. I don't have an exhaustive list for you. I was just sort of quickly jotting them down.
Yeah, I think your yearbook is running.
Yep.
Yes.
Sue, what else?
Well, Oliver, grade level officers are doing different things, you know, doing reports, current events, on announcements, our media club, and art club.
Media club, art club.
VSA is meeting?
Yep. GSA is very...
Mary?
I'm, I'm curious, I mean, We the People or some of them, I mean, some of those other groups, is that?
Yeah, Well, We the People is a class.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So, but you can always count on We the People to be working 24 hours around the clock. There is no stopping.
For meeting.
Are they doing a, a contest this year through Zoom? Is that how that's going to be working?
So the, the competition happens in the spring, during the spring semester. So if I recall correctly from last year, so they went, the state, the state championship last year happened in Boston. So that was before March 13th.
Right, it was February.
The national championship happened afterwards. So that was remote. So since they have a remote model, I'm assuming they're gonna, they're gonna continue to do that.
And the other thing, Bill, is the sports. You know, we are, we are holding, we did fall sports. We're about to embark on winter sports. We did postpone for one week. But, you know, there are, we are hoping to have swims start, well, we're hoping to have all of our sports start next week. Swim is the only sport, if you recall, that is actually going to be competing against other teams because remember they're doing it virtually? So they do really need to start practicing next week. They're going to be a week behind all the other athletes that they'll be competing with. So you guys remember, they're doing it virtually, right? So, okay. So swimming will start next week. We're looking to have basketball start next week. Practices just a couple times a week. If they can go outside, they'll go outside and do drills if the weather permits. Otherwise, they'll be in the gym, but they won't be using the locker rooms or anything. Hockey also, but I did have a request and, you know, I, I am, I am...
Allison, can I hold you there for a minute? Before we get into sports, can we just finish to see if there are any other questions that anybody has about education? I have a few things I just want to share with the community. And I want to stay and finish up that one subject before we move on. So Marissa, I see that you have something that you want to say or ask?
Yes, two things. First, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the candor around the challenges and inadequacies of, of remote learning under these conditions. I'm anticipating that next year we will need to have a lot of compensatory measures for learning loss. And then, you know, I think one of the parents during public speak really appropriately mentioned that our students are going to have a lot of social and emotional transition to make as they get back among their peers and in the buildings. So given that, it does make me really concerned to hear that we have a directive from the mayor to reduce our budget next year at a time when I think we're going to need every resource we can get to be making up for what will be over a lost year of in-person learning in all likelihood. With that said, I also wanted to ask Dr. Leclerc about the search and hiring process for our technology director. Do you have any updates on that?
Yes. Do you want me to address that now, Cindy, or do?
Sure. I, I think we need to wrap this piece up. So yeah, that would be a good time to answer this question.
Sure. So our IT director left in December. And so we appointed Darren Paulus, who was a network technician in the district as our interim technology director. And he will serve in that role until the end of this school year. And I really felt there was, it was important to have consistency and stability because there's so much going on in the IT department. The volume of technology that has been added to the district this year is just incomprehensible. I mean, the, the amount of computers, the amount of work that needs to be done, the amount of support that that IT department really needs to push out to teachers and to families. We really couldn't afford to miss a beat. And, you know, we're also, we're challenged by budgets, you know, and so we needed to think creatively about how we could continue that department in a manner in which we thought it would be most effective. We have a, a pretty skeleton crew in there. So they're doing a lot and we couldn't really afford downtime in a search that would, over the holidays, take at least, you know, at least a month, you know, over the Christmas, New Year's holiday. We really needed to keep things moving. So Darren agreed to step in and I really appreciate that he did that. And we will, once the end of the school year comes along and we have an approved budget, we will look to see about reorganizing that department, thinking a little bit more creatively about the function and role that we need to have addressed in that department. So, and of course, if we do a full search, a search for a director or an administrator is made up of a committee beyond myself. I usually wouldn't direct a search that large. So we'll see where that goes. But a lot of it will depend on the budget that we're walking into.
Have we been able to add a staff member to replace Darren? Or are we, are we down a person in that department?
So we had, we had Darren moved up to the interim director position and Justin Teets, who was an employee on the city side, moved into a role similar to what Darren was doing. And we have been able to, we had a part-time employee that is a technician that we were able to expand that person's hours. And we had another person that is going to be switching now to the city side. So we have two and a half people basically in that department.
Anybody else before I go on?
I think Nicole wanted to say something.
Yep. Yeah. So, I mean, the city has been helping out the schools as far as the, the one person who's coming back to the school in IT was actually, was hired and has been paid by CARES Act in the city. I would also say as part of walking into the budget that we are, that there will be more ESER as well as government emergency relief funds to hire staff as needed. And I think that we have to take a good look at priority. I, I just, you know, not taking it personally, but I will defend the city and the other departments. All departments are being asked to do the 2.5% increase, I mean, decrease with not decreasing staff for very good fiscal reasons. A shame game about a mayor or any other department owning or needing more money than schools or whatnot is nothing I am tolerating. Not this year. Not at all. If the schools need help in reducing their budget 2.5%, the city treasurer and myself are more than, more than willing to, to make those cuts and, and to see what can be done with that, that budget. No problem with that. But I, you know, I'm not, I'm not going down this road yet again. Schools versus city and cutting and what are you going to do and all of that. You're going to do, as the school committee, as a mayor, as staff, exactly what every other department is going to do. And we're going to take a hit this year because we don't know what's coming back at us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? So I, I just wanted to say a couple of things and then ask a couple of things for the future from the administrators and from you, Allison. First of all, before I say what I believe is the good that you're doing, I will say, I understand people being upset. Any child who isn't being educated is too much. Any family who isn't eating and doesn't have enough food is too much. This is a horrific time period that we have all gone through as a nation, as a, as a state, as a county, and as a city, and it's horrific. So please know that any child is too, is too much if they're not doing well. But what I do want the public to hear, just as an educator myself, and I'm only going to speak for myself, every school that I am aware of is going through this. Every school that I am aware of is working as hard as they can to reach out to every parent, every student. And I, I know myself, in, in my capacity, I'm working way beyond school hours to reach out to my students. And I know there are teachers in East Hampton doing that and across the nation. But, so I just want to balance it with, it's really hard when you're hearing that these many kids are not attending class and these many kids are failing. And I don't want us to think that East Hampton is different from what we're seeing across the state. Because every school that I am aware of, and I talked to numerous teachers, are all going through this. I'm part of a building support team where we talk about this every day. Who is not coming? Who is not attending? Who is super struggling with remote? So I just want to say that I've listened to the presentation today and I'm very happy with a lot of the work that, that has been done, with a lot of the reaching out. I really like as a teacher, the careful, thoughtful idea of changing the value of final exams, allowing kids to bring their quarter one grades up to 60. Those kinds of measures are things that all of these schools are doing across the state to help kids along and to give them a chance. Because we don't want any kids to, to, to funk. And it's, it's horrific. So I just listening and I took notes on all the different things that are going on. I'm really happy about the attendance with the little kids. But the whole idea of, I love the idea of if you pass the final exam, you pass the course. That is a great, a great idea and a great avenue for kids to be able to pass and salvage the grades. That being said, I do have a question. Is there a program to help those students? Is there an advocacy program for those kids that are struggling? Are you reaching out to those kids and maybe doing, offering a tutoring session to help them pass that last test so that they can pass for the quarter? And if not, could we start that? So that is one question I had. Meredith?
Yeah, I can answer that. And it's one thing I, I forgot to mention. We do have an extra help session every day, five days a week, from 1:30 to 2:30, which is the, the gen ed teachers prep time. But we have our exploratory teachers, we have our, mostly our paraprofessionals running those help sessions. So every team, because we, we work in teams at Whitebrook, every team has their, their own help session every day from 1:30 to 2:30. The link is in the kids' Google Classroom. They all know how to access it. And, and we remind them about it during morning announcements and we, we have let all the families know about it too.
Okay, great. How about the high school?
So a couple of things and I'll ask Sue to chime in as well here. But one is every class has a flex block built into it for the specific purpose of allowing.
Can you lift your mic again so I can hear you, Bill?
Thank you for reminding me. Stop looking at me that way, Wilson. All right. So yeah, every, every period has a flex block built into it specifically for the purpose of allowing extra help time. So that's, that's encouraged to all the students on a regular basis. You know, meet with your teacher during flex time to get that extra help. In terms of additional tutoring, there's a couple of things that, so we, we have a policy in the high school where if you exceed those 10 absences, you can make up certain amount, up to five. So Sue's been offering after-school Zoom sessions to allow students to make up time, but also they use that time to do the work and to help prepare for the exams. In terms of a tutoring program, I'm gonna, Sue's been, we've been talking about this and Sue's been looking to try and find ways that we can do that. You know, resources are limited, but Sue has some ideas that we've been thinking about.
Thank you. Sue?
Yes, thanks, Bill. So in those afternoon sessions that we've had for the attendance makeup, there is a component, an academic component that students are doing work. And they have been doing it. And it's, it's actually great to check in with the students about what they're doing and chatting with them. I would like to see that expand. And now that we've kind of got, gotten a system in place where there would be something, an offering of different content areas, people that would offer some time to be able to do that and work with students. We also have the, so that would be through a volunteer and/or compensated position. Also, we have National Honor Society. Our students that are part of the National Honor Society, part of what they do is they offer service to other students, to peers. So there's a tutoring coordinator that's a student and I also work with, or we work with the faculty advisors to set up times where it's peer-to-peer tutoring because we know that sometimes some students need adults, but other times some students really need a peer to be able to do that. And we've also offered that. Brian Miller, our athletic director, is also wonderful about having student athletes, students being the first part of that, helping others, especially upperclassmen and women, helping other students with their studies. So that would often be a part of, before they were doing some of the practice, the coaches or the captains would be working with students. That continues. There's still that kind of informal check-in from within student athletes. I'm sure that's happening. Not on a formal basis because, you know, we're not practicing right now, but I know the captains have been doing outreach.
Okay. I had a feeling that you had things like that in the works because, as I said, all schools are struggling with this. But I think it's really important that the public hears, you're using National Honor Society students, we're doing the same thing. They need 20 hours of community service. Match them up with a struggling student and you can, you can help them along. So I really like those ideas. And so I guess my last question about attendance, everybody's dealing with the tech, the mental health, the health issues and the economic issues. Every school is dealing with this. It's horrific. It's too much anywhere. These are the hardest times I've ever seen for students, for economies, for cities, for families, you know. And I think that, I just wanted to say, I'm impressed listening today to all the different things that you have all started to do, all the reaching out. It's good to hear. I do know there are a few districts where they are not doing this. And that is very sad. And their numbers are much worse. And I am really glad that East Hampton... And I am really glad that East Hampton is not doing that. I do have a question. I know, please, don't be mad at me. But this was an important presentation. And I think that, I know how busy you are, because I know how busy I am as a teacher. And I'm going to ask that we have more frequent updates, that we can keep track of the progress you made. I mean, we've talked tonight about food. We've talked about attendance. We've talked about failure rates. We've talked about the advocacy and the reaching out. Can we just have a little more of this as an update to see if we're making progress? To see what tweaks have been made? And what would be a reasonable time for an update to happen? And is anybody besides me interested in that? Again, I apologize, because I know just how busy everybody is. But I think it's important for people to hear. It's important for the public to hear. This is what we're doing. This is the problem, and it's not a happy problem. But here's the problem, and here's how we're trying to address it. And this is the progress we made or the progress we didn't make. So I guess I'm asking two questions. City School Committee, are you interested in more frequent updates? And can we find a reasonable amount of time to have that happen? Jonathan?
Yeah, I would, I guess, refer back to the mayor's prior request for some sort of dashboard or report that consolidates this information. So that, you know, if it turns out, you know, look at that as a first avenue. If it turns out that can be created, perhaps we can save them the time of having to come back to the, our meetings on a regular basis. But we still kind of get a recurring, you know, feedback of progress, especially if then periodically it can be coupled with anecdote and reflection. So it's not just.
I would never, I would never want them to come back on a regular basis. To me, that would be just, I'm thinking, whenever we meet, we don't want to be taking up their time. But if we could just increase the frequency so that the public has a chance to hear this back and forth and the questions and the issues and the strategizing for what's been going on. I think it's really important that people hear what we're trying and the progress that we made. And I'm hoping there's going to be more progress. I think we're already coming up with ideas for the food issue. So anybody else? Anybody besides me would like more frequent?
Yeah, I'd like to see more frequent updates. And kind of on the dovetail of what Jonathan would do. You know, all of our departments and schools especially are dealing and reporting on a lot. And if there's a way that the progress could be put into a regular dashboard so as not to make, you know, our educators' day longer and is just populated that way and posted or given kind of, you know, I mean, it's not that, you know, our city auditor, once a month, gives us all, you know, the reports of what's been spent, kind of like the budget year-to-date, once a month. I mean, is there, are there data points that we can get that are easier to put together and just sent out or presented at the school committee as an attachment rather than to pull everyone, you know, here? So I'm just wondering.
Yeah, and I agree that there's some data that we can just share and put together. But I also, I mean, I took four pages of notes. I'm a teacher, what do you want? But there's a lot of information that came out tonight, and I think it was really important for people to hear. So Maren?
I mean, I definitely appreciate this information, the conversation tonight. Obviously, like you said, lots of notes have been taken. Lots of people worked, a lot gathered this information to bring to us. I think that I would also just speculate that our feeling of being out of touch also just comes from the fact that we just came from the holidays. There's just a reality of we're coming out of a period where we weren't meeting a lot because of Thanksgiving, because of Christmas and Hanukkah, all the different holiday stuff that was happening over December. So we will be meeting more regularly. We will be getting this information more regularly. I think that that's part of what is just the transition from the end of last year into this year. So I don't, I think that there are ways for Super and Leclair to work with her team to get that information to us. But I think some of the feelings of disconnectedness is just because of what is our natural schedule. And we're getting back into a much busier schedule now. We will be getting that information more regularly.
Jonathan, you're on mute.
So just one additional thought, sort of to piggyback on what Maren's saying about kind of getting back into the schedule of meetings and recognizing that we have the end of the semester at the high school, I believe, around the corner. I would imagine there will definitely be data around how student failures have changed and whether or not they've, you know, we did see changes from our interventions. And I would definitely be interested in seeing a report back on that. And I've got to imagine maybe that was on your mind to some extent, somebody anyways.
Happy to do it.
Yep. Great.
The semester ends on the 22nd, so February meeting.
So the February meeting would be really, it would be beneficial? Okay. So that's great. So we'll see you in February. Thank you. But I do want to really thank you for the information. And as an educator, I'm looking at the different thought processes. And I just want to say thank you for the attempts that you're making and the careful thinking and adjustment. Good schools are doing that. And it's really painful to see a single child flunking or tuning out. And every district has them. Doesn't make it easier. I wish there were none. So now, unless somebody else has something to say now, oh, Lori, sorry.
I just wanted to add, I just found it very disconcerting that the city council knew these issues that had to do with the schools before we did, because this was the first we heard of them. So I'm just wondering where the breakdown in communication is in the city, why residents were complaining about not having internet connection for school or for not having meals when we thought that they had those things. So that's what I just want to work on, the communication. I don't think it had to do with us not meeting as a school committee, because we always receive communication from everybody. Why did we just hear about this this week? That's what worries me.
I hear you. You know, it just is going to take constant reaching out. But it sounds like that's been happening, and then we'll just hear about how it's progressed. The food issue is definitely very, very concerning to me.
Would it be appropriate if council members are hearing from specific constituents in the community, is it appropriate to ask them to either share that concern or the name of that person with us, given it's probably public record?
I'm sure that Dr. Leclair will do that, reach out and ask.
And certainly, I would encourage the counselors to ask their constituents to contact us.
Yes, yes, yes. So yeah, that's an important, that's an important piece of information. Okay, now you wanted to talk about athletics. Oh, Shannon, sorry, your hand's up. Is it up or are you a kid sometimes?
My biggest concern right now is, you know, our main method of communication is email or Facebook posts or, you know, electronic something. And there are people who don't have access to that. And these are the people that aren't reaching out because they don't know they can or they don't know they should. Who do they contact? You know, a lot of the stuff that I've seen is via email or on Facebook. What are our other means of communication to these families?
Shannon, if I can just pipe up, and the administrators may want to join me, but I can attest, you know, well, first of all, I think I agree with you about email. Facebook, I don't consider a means of communication. I consider that a means of people complaining. We don't engage in a back and forth on Facebook. We post things, but we don't engage with people on Facebook. But I believe the other piece that, you know, you're forgetting about are phone calls. And I would say that every administrator here tonight has made numerous phone calls to families, as have teachers. Cindy Mohica's on this call. I know that she's made phone calls and reached out to people. So I think the phone is the other piece. You know, unfortunately, and I will take ownership of this, we have instituted a no visitors policy in our schools this year. So people can't just drop by. However, in case you don't know, Shannon, and you might not because you don't have kids in the schools again, we have drop boxes at all of our schools.
Oh, I've seen them here.
Yeah, so people can drop things in those boxes. And if they need to pick something up, they can pick it up in those boxes as well. And I would say furthermore, the administrators at every level in this district, I know personally, have gotten in their cars and dropped things off at people's homes since the pandemic hit, as have teachers and counselors. So I think there is more than just email. And I really think that, you know, it's a two-way street as well. I think that there are a lot of people that communicate. And I don't know, you know, if there are food issues, it's not, it's not reaching me. I'm not hearing about it. So I would hope that if the city council is hearing about a concern related to the school, that they're instructing people to, you know, reach out to the school building or to the school central office or giving them my email or my phone number. You know, that's what I think any member of the school committee would do. So I'm assuming the city council would do that as well. But I am not hearing, I had one email today about a family that was struggling with food insecurity, and it was Cindy Mohica was on it. And that was the only one I've had. So it's not reaching me. And so I'm assuming that if people are getting that information, they're telling people to call the school. So I don't know where the disconnect is. I don't know if that helps, Shannon.
Well, I mean, it's not, I'm, please understand I am not discounting what everybody's doing. I totally appreciate it.
I know.
You know, I really do. And but, you know, there's families who don't know how to reach out. You know what I mean? They.
No, I do, I do know, Shannon, and I, you know, I mean, Julianne's on here, and she hasn't spoken yet, but she works with the ELL teachers who I know communicate by phone or by text with all the ELL families. Am I correct, Julianne? Yeah, so I mean, they're, and those kids are scattered throughout the district. So, you know, not every issue needs to reach me, certainly. But I know that there are para professionals that are engaged with parents and working on issues. I know there are counselors at every level that are working with families. So, you know, if there are issues, there's some kind of, we're missing something somewhere.
Even though we have a no visitor policy, you know, we're at Maple, we're at our schools every day, and parents, we see multiple families every day. They're coming to pick something up. They're coming to drop something off. And so we are seeing people much more than we were last March. We're seeing a lot of people face-to-face. So that helps, too. You know, we continue to take the opportunities for drop-off and pickups to connect with families on either large scales or the one-to-one conversations.
Now, are you guys still doing, oh, you're doing a different program at the school, right? Not the lunch program?
Maple does the lunch program, but then we also do material pickups. We do material pickups every month. And then if, you know, a laptop gets dropped off and a parent comes to the school to pick it up, we're there, we connect, you know, through the door, through the, you know, with the doghouse as the drop box. But, you know, we're seeing people. And that's another important connection. We take any opportunity we can to make that connection.
Thank you.
I mean, I just, when I'm hearing all of this, I mean, I, I've, you know, I, I don't know. I feel for everyone. But in this specific example, you know, and what Judy just said and listening to Meredith, and like, there are so many things going on. And the questioning or the, I just feel like I'm hearing all of this stuff. And some of it certainly I know because I'm a 50-pacing or, you know, I talk in Allison or whatnot. But to get that word out, to boost just confidence in our community of like, look at what our schools are doing in a very imperfect, broken world right now. And not to have, I don't know how many hours we've been doing this, important public conversation, but, you know, just some sort of data points tracking, like those family connections or like the number of, you know, I know you guys are delivering laptops because I've seen people go in and out of the building. But I guess what I hear over and over again, and what I'm asking for, for probably the benefit of the community more than even myself or school committee, is like, we are doing all of these things. It is a part of your daily routine. You are in the buildings every single day. You're not just helping families and students. You're helping your own staff get up. So I just, you know, I, I don't want to add another report to anybody's plate. I don't. But what we are hearing tonight is great. Like, it's amazing. And to get that in some format, to push it out, even if it gives a snapshot, I think is really important for you guys, for the collective school department, staff, and your confidence and morale as well as our communities. So, and saying that, I'm not sure what the best data points are, but, yeah.
I'll ponder that.
Okay, so let's move on. I cut you off, but it's important.
Yeah, so we were talking about athletics. And I think that I said what I needed to say. The final thing that is under my piece of the agenda tonight is the school committee meeting calendar that was distributed to you by Sue Colby today. So you might have it in your inbox. And it was the meetings from January to December of the calendar year. So I guess Sue Colby is just looking to see if anyone had any concerns, if there were any, I think she checked to make sure that the dates of the meetings did not fall on any particular holidays. But if she missed something, if you would please look at that. I'm assuming she probably wants a vote maybe at the next meeting. So, and she'll tell me differently if that's not right. But I think all she wanted you to do was just kind of peruse it at your leisure. And then let us know.
About athletics, I know you delayed a week. And I know the numbers are poor this week. I do know that we're all expecting them to come down once we get to pass this holiday period. So I'm just curious how the decision will be made to decide whether or not you can go forward starting next week. Are you going to wait until Thursday when the new numbers come out? Check with the Board of Health as to, I know there's some lags right now with how the numbers are coming out.
Yeah, well, Bree and I did already communicate today about that. And the mayor can attest to this. mayor can attest to this. You know, we can wait until Thursday night, but most likely Bree will know Wednesday night what color we're in. Not that, you know, we're going to share that out publicly, but she has, you know, a pretty good idea. If we continue to be in the red, that will be a decision point for us, and I will look to Bree to weigh in on that. Here are some of my feelings about it. We are not competing with most of our winter sports, so they're not engaging with any other teams. All we're doing is providing an opportunity for practice two to three times a week. If I need to put that off another week, I could do that without jeopardizing anything. The, the one kind of oddball would be swimming. Swimming competition starts next week, so, because of this virtual, the virtual meets. So we already postponed them a week, so they're a week behind the other athletes that they'll be competing against. If I postpone it again, they'll have to forfeit their meets and for next week, and that would be, that would be difficult, I think, for them because it's a very short season. There's, the number of meets is very small. So I think for some of them, it, you know, it may be the deciding factor about whether we do this or not. Remember, that team is very small, just as a perspective for those people listening. That's a co-op team normally, but we decided not to invite the other schools in our co-op onto the team, so it's a very small team. So I would like to push forward to allow them to begin practice next week so that they can be part of the...
Well, that was another question I had, because I know that their competitions are virtual, so that greatly is going to reduce the risk. So I was wondering if you are seeing swimming as one issue that you would think about?
Swim is also a lower-risk sport than the other winter sports in the categories that were disseminated at this state level.
So are you going to treat them differently? For instance, you might delay one other week with other sports, and then...
That's what I'd like to do. I, I don't want them to miss out on their season.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
It's so limited already.
Okay. So the meeting calendar, we will look at and will vote on next, next meeting. And if you don't have anything else, we'll go on to Matters for Action. Lori?
I'm sorry, I, just going back to the calendar, I want to publicly recognize Sue Colby, who goes out of her way to make sure that the calendar will not interfere with certain holidays, and that is very appreciated. So thank you, Sue.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Marissa?
Great. Oh, if I wanted to introduce something for a future meeting, should I do that under other?
Yeah, we could do, let's do the Matters for Action, and then you do still have other, and we'll do that, and then we'll adjourn.
Okay, excellent. Motion to approve school payroll dated 12/17/2020 in the amount of $533,130.90.
I'll second that.
Okay. Will Coe? Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crery, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Motion to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated 12/17/2020 in the amount of $235,626.22.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crery, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Motion to approve school payroll dated 12/31/2020 in the amount of $539,176.35.
I'll second that motion.
Jonathan?
Aye. Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crery, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye. Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Motion to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated 12/31/2020 in the amount of $358,938.25.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crery, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Okay, other. Now, Marissa?
Yes, so for some future agenda, when there is room, I would be interested in having a conversation about, thinking about school start times for our different buildings. We had broached this conversation a few times in the past, I think, before you were with us, Dr. Leclair, and it was always the roadblocks of like, how do you totally reformulate an entire district, given we've had this incredible disruption. There seems like an opportunity to really think about what might be start times that are in keeping with what we know about students' bodies, their sleep schedules, the best time of day for learning, all those sorts of things. I think I've seen a couple of the districts in the area who are taking up that conversation at this point, too, so I'd love to discuss that as a committee in the future.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
Cool. Thank you.
So we can put around February?
We did actually pass it.
Oh, really?
They finally did, yes, recently.
So maybe we talk about it at our next February meeting. Okay. Shannon?
I just wanted to see if Allison, on the hotspot issue, that, you know, people are having connection issues and stuff like that, once you review the program that the mayor has, can we talk about that next week or at our next meeting?
At the end of January?
Yeah. I'm curious to see how the program works. I mean, do, do we buy that hotspot and just it's available for use by a family, or do they have to pick up the tab after? I'm just curious how it works.
No, we, we've bought the hotspots. Julianne is poking her head on here, and she would have more information.
We pay for both the hotspots and the service.
Oh, you do? Oh, we do, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
We give it to the families. Anyone that's asked, we've given it to them.
Yep.
I'm just suggesting looking at the, the program because it's a different service provider, AT&amp;T, and we know it works throughout, you know, to figure out if it is connection, you know, or whatnot, just as a, another possibility.
And just curious, have we used all the hotspots, or do we still have some left?
I think that we used all of the ones that we bought at the beginning of the school year, and then Julianne, through a grant, just bought another batch of them that are being deployed right now, and I don't know if we used all of that batch, Julianne.
No, we can, we can always get more. We have, we haven't used what we have right now, but we can always get more.
Okay, can families get more than one? Like, if there's multiple students in a family, in a...
Yeah, we have deployed more than one to households that have additional students on the Wi-Fi. Yep.
And have the Chromebooks come in?
Yes.
Yep. And they were distributed? They are being distributed.
They're being distributed now. They're starting at the K level. K has been distributed. One at Center Peppin. Jill is poking her head on. Was it one or two? One, grade one or grade two? Grade two today.
We distributed all kindergarten on Friday. Grade two was today. Grade one will be Thursday, and next week we have four then three.
That is so wonderful to hear. Thank you.
And Maple's doing it a little bit differently, but still they've, they're distributing them as well. And then the other grade that follows after the elementary is fifth grade.
And then everybody will have a one-to-one.
And also, any student who needs in K to two can get an external mouse and headset, and actually three and four, too. I don't know why I said K to two.
Okay.
You know, a headset's really essential if there are multiple children in the family, so you don't have to hear the other teachers.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, so we have tons of them.
And then I think the only other thing that I've heard come up is in regards to COVID testing and, and the requirement to have the testing performed every week. I understand some families are having issues that when they have multiple children, more than two, they can't have the whole car tested at the same time.
Are you talking about for athletics?
Yes.
Okay.
That's still a requirement, right?
Yeah, yeah. You know, we brought it up at, it was discussed at the COVID response team meeting yesterday, and the COVID team is not really wanting to relent on that, as I think Lori articulated earlier. And what I would say is, I think all of us on this call know that HCC is pretty inundated right now with the surge, but reports from multiple people have been that Amherst is the place to go. You make an appointment, so you're not waiting in a line for hours and hours. It's easy in, it's easy out. And I think I would reiterate what Lori said much earlier. We recognize as a school district, this is a hardship and this is a challenge, but the, the fact that there is not enough testing around us is not the, should not be the deciding factor in us not requiring testing. People should be demanding more testing of, you know, those people that they put in elected offices. I'm not saying the mayor, who doesn't control that. I'm saying their, their reps, their senators, the governor, that sort of thing, you know. That's, that's really the proper outlet for that. But I acknowledge, and I think everyone on the COVID team acknowledges, this is a challenge, but it's the bar that the COVID team has set, and it's the bar that the school committee has approved. I don't think you were all on board, but I, but it passed, so it's kind of out of my hands.
I kind of want to put it out there so that people aren't waiting in line for two hours and realize when they get up there, they can only test two out of the three kids that they have in the backseat. I don't know, Bill, are you still around, or did you leave?
Bill jumped off.
He did. I'm still there. Hi, Sue.
Maybe you could put that in your messages to families, that Amherst seems to be more open, you know, and seems to be...
Yeah, I can talk with Brian, and he can push that out to the athletes.
Get ahold of Brian.
Yeah.
And also, Hoyoke, the downtown Hoyoke testing site changed their hours, and I think that they added a day. So Brian knows about that. We shared that with Brian also.
Because I went by Hoyoke today, and what a mess.
The downtown one is actually, it went inside to the War Memorial, and it's, it was always a lot quicker, and it still remains to be quicker than the Hoyoke community site.
And we do send families all of the locations?
We give them all of the options, yes. Yep, in the times, yep.
Thank you. I think that's all that was on my list that we haven't already talked about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there is nothing else, do we have an emotion, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crery, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you to the public, and thank you to administrators. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night.